You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the June 21st meeting of the Michigan City Common Council Fire Merit Commission Joint Workshop. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesseslaporte county.org.
Today is June 21st and we're going to go ahead and start it with our joint workshop at the Michigan City Common Council and the Fire Merit Commission. And this meeting was called to discuss updates to fire merit ordinance and lateral transfer opportunities. Before we dig into some of the changes that are going to be presented, I did want to make sure that everybody knew that on the next agenda, there were some state laws that changed that will be in effect July 1. And I know that we're doing a new testing, we have a new testing date that will be coming up. And there was a change to the state code. So on the next agenda, I'll be sponsoring, I guess I am, yep, I'm going to be sponsoring a change to mid section 54-153, 2, and section 70-103A of the municipal code and filed with Senate in mode at 185, which increases the maximum age of applicants to the fire departments to under the age of 40 years. And so I just wanted to make sure everybody had a copy of it. This will be on the agenda so we can get it done. We'll put it on the next agenda and try to pass it in three reading, the second and third reading at the second meeting in July to meet the dates of passing. I just wanted to give you all an update on that. So with that being said, we're going to go into, and I think everybody may have a copy now, some of the changes that we discussed. I received at the last Fire Merit Commission meeting, we talked about, and also this is also joint meeting with our local union as well, but there were several changes. And I don't have that list, but just the number, yeah, that one. Yes, this one. There were several changes that we talked about and whether it would be a good idea. So I would like to just go through, first of all, give the floor to the chief to see if there's anything overall that he would like to discuss. And then we will talk about specifically the different subsections. There are 15 items on this list, so we'll do that one. So I'll give you the floor first and we'll just have a discussion. This is the workshop, so we're not going to do all those formalities, FYI. And our goal is to come to some agreements on some of the changes. Some of them are really cosmetic in nature and to at some point do a full overhaul of all the changes at once. But we want to get the H or it's done first.
Correct. So you wanted to hit the, our priority list?
Yes.
Okay.
Priority list.
I spoke with Nick Gromovon earlier and we picked out four of the priority that we'd like to hit first. If you look at the one that Nick presented to you, Local 475, we both discussed these at our meetings. So it would be under number two of his, we're on this page here of Local 475 right now.
Okay, so we're looking at, I just want to make sure we're on the same page. We're looking at the Local 475, it's two pages and number one from 10.
Yes, correct. So number two, I'll let Nick speak on this if you want to, Nick. Basically, it's a lateral transfer program that we'd like to mimic the Michigan City Police Department's. And Nick printed out a firefighter version of it. Do you have that?
Yep, I have that.
Everybody else have that?
Yep.
It's basically mimicking the police department's lateral transfer program. So that was a high priority, was to get that added to the merit ordinance. If you don't have it, I'm copying, Nick, I have some. And I have a copy of the actual police lateral transfer program, if you need that. You need that, Brian?
Yeah. So, because there's two different things. There's the, there's two, there's one with the background and then there's one with the overview. So there's two different versions.
So one of them is, it kind of mirrors the way the police have their contract language.
Okay.
That would be the, it has it on there as contract language. And then the other one is just kind of an overview of why we want it and the benefits for the city, the benefits for the fire department.
Yeah, so I would, if you could just go over the benefits first and then we'll talk about the contract language.
All right. So as we know, we just, we just went through a revamped contract language. We got increased base salaries, which made us competitive. With that being said, we have had numerous individuals from other departments inquire about whether or not we have a lateral transfer program at which we do not have right now. So I think that with that raise we just got now is a perfect time to implement it. We are coming very short on our hiring list right now. And as we know, if we don't have people to hire, that causes overtime. And when we hire new firefighters, there is the cost of their training, which typically is about six months while they're in the academy. And for that six months, we typically have to pay overtime and all of that adds up. So I think it's kind of a big win for the city and cost effectiveness. It's kind of a no-brainer in my eyes, but it all spells it out in that proposal letter that each of you received.
And I'll make sure that the council gets a copy of this as well. So in the police contract on pages 15 and 16.
Hey Chief, do I have a copy? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just, I thought you committed, I forgot.
So the second document that we had is about the actual contract language. And then the police contract is on page 15 and 16 of the police contract. And this is the mirrored version of that.
That is the mirrored version. I took word for word how the FOP have their language and I replaced words like officer, replaced it with firefighter. And then I replaced the section, the contract section for longevity and vacation time, replaced it with the matching section from our contract.
So in our fire merit ordinance, we probably would have to create the whole section on lateral transfers, but I'm assuming. Because we have everything, because the reason why we would have to put it in here too is because we need to make sure that, you know, I know seniority people will be looking at that, making sure that they're not going to be bumped, how they're going to get their vacation. And I know the police was the first step, but we want to make sure if there's any, we probably should have a conversation with the police department to make sure there aren't any hurdles that they've run into that we can change that before we move forward with something like this. So I will, I don't think the attorney is seeing this as an issue.
I know.
All right.
How long has the police department had theirs in a set?
Just about a year.
Almost a year. We've, I think for me, I know we've had two that I know personally are lateral transfers. I don't know if there's, but I heard there were more than two. I just know of two in particular that left the department, came back through a lateral. Well, one left and came back, the other one is just a lateral transfer. But he's from Michigan City. And that's what we're hoping for, because I'm, it makes me wonder if the folks that we've been training that have been leaving are going back through a lateral transfer just to go back home. Most of the people who left were going back to where they came from.
For some reason.
Right. So it would be nice if we have some Michigan City folks somewhere who want to come back or live somewhere else downstate, want to get back close. I mean, a lot of us have family and aging parents that, that's how I ended up back in Michigan City years ago, because of family, you know? And sometimes, you know, having a carrot where you can do what you've been doing in your career and still do it somewhere else, that would be helpful, so.
So you want us to check with the police department on that and see what problems they ran into?
Yep, I would suggest if we can get anybody to, if they can tell us of any issues they've run into as far as the ones that they receive. I know we've sworn in a couple already this year, this year. And then we should send this over to Amber, I'll forward this if I get this an email, to Amber and the council attorney and ask them, you know, what are the next steps? We know that it's in the contract language of the police department, but were there any changes to, I don't remember us doing an ordinance change for the lateral transfer program, do you?
I didn't see it when I looked, because I looked for that.
Which?
I looked for that in their ordinance and I didn't see it.
Yeah, so it may not have to go into the ordinance. It may just be a negotiation thing that has to go through that process instead of meeting. So I would say that we get these over to the attorneys and let them determine the next steps as far as the lateral transfer program. So that was one of the big ones that I think we could move forward on and just make the recommendation to see if there are any changes or issues we need to update. And then let the negotiation group do their thing.
So then on the same page, I'm still on the Local 475 cover page there, number three. This is a high priority we felt. We'd like to, instead of us doing a physical agility test, we'd like to go to the National CPAT card where the applicant can go to the MAC center over Valco. They can schedule it every other week, they have an open schedule. And just let them do that. We do need to probably figure out how it's going to be written. And Nick actually brought this up, I think it was your idea, to have them, you know, do the written test, do the aerial climb, and then once they pass, well, they could do the CPAT card.
That way you don't pay for it if you don't need it.
Why do it if you don't need it, if you don't pass the written? There's no sense in doing that. So that would cut back on somebody having that expense and then it'd be for nothing, at least for our department, because they can't take that to any department. So we'd really rather them just pay for it themselves, take care of it.
What's the cost for it?
I think it was, I don't believe to the exact dollar, but you're looking at, I think, 160, 60-ish, maybe 165. And then you can pay for a couple, two practices, I believe, and those were maybe 25 apiece.
So anywhere from?
I was on the website today, I didn't look at the price, but I did look at the scheduling. And it's every other week, there's one day a week where you can, and you can schedule it to your own flexible, you know, to your.
So the lender is 60 to about $225. And would you give them like 30 days from the time they pass?
Exactly, that's what we're thinking, yeah. 30 to whatever is decided, whatever you feel is, you know.
Because after testing, after they pass the written and the aerial climb, they test every other week.
Yep.
So almost trying to be six weeks next? Yeah, that seems long, though. I still think four weeks, but.
Do you take it every other week or every week?
Every other week.
Okay.
So every two weeks you can schedule it, there's one day and every two weeks.
So a little, a little background on that. This is another one of the ones that is going to bring some cost savings to the, to the city. Historically in the past, with our physical agility testing, a lot of the fire department members conduct it and that comes with an overtime cost. And as we get more and more applicants, the bigger the applicant pool, the longer that process takes. So that, that cost to the city is going to significantly increase as we get more applicants. So with something like this, we're only worried about the people that are going to be getting a conditional offer. Those will be the ones that will be going to go get their CPAT cards.
But you have to, there's also an Indiana code that talks about, it literally calls it the physical agility test. So we have to make sure that that language matches.
Okay, so certified physical agility test, is that correct?
It's literally in Indiana code 36-8-3.2-3, they call it the physical agility test. They don't say anything about the CPAT. So we have to make sure that that language matches, because that's a problem with a lot of the ordinance versus the state statute, so.
So what I would do is, it should be a lower case certified and then physical agility test. It's probably just.
Because they have, they have very specific things in what the physical agility test in the state statute, what that consists of. It doesn't specifically say aerial climb, but it says, you know, there's some requirements in there that are for the specifics.
Can you give me the state statute?
Sure, 36-8-3.2-3.
One more time?
And I had all those printed out on the website, you know.
So, so somebody could confirm with the MAC that they're basically, they should, whatever the code says, the MAC should be doing, all right? In a nutshell, right?
We want them to match, because that's the problem when you go to, and we have issues, if they're not matching, the ordinance isn't matching the state statute. So that's the whole purpose, I think, of revising the ordinance is to make it sync up and match.
All right, so let me look at the ordinance here. 54, 154. So should we just call out the state statute in 54-154?
That would be my suggestion, is just follow that language.
Okay.
And that would then require them to basically go get the CPAT card.
I don't recall, I don't recall the CPAT card specifically being listed in there. Again, I had all those printed out, like.
Yeah.
So I have a.
So what I would say, so we need to confirm what the, so the state statute has, it calls it out, but the MAC, I would think though, the MAC would keep up with all the state statutes.
It's a national CPAT card that you can go to any department that accepts it.
But it's Indiana, I just want to make sure that we match.
Well, but it's also being, it's being performed in Valco, which is Indiana statute anyway. So I'm sure it would have to match Indiana statute.
Yeah.
If it was maybe in Michigan or somewhere else, but there might be a question, but it's performing for Indiana anyway.
And we don't, I mean, I don't, so I think we call out the state statute, but it doesn't say, it just says scheduling physical agility test. It doesn't talk about, I don't see anything that's, that calls out everything that's in it. In our.
No, here it says that firefighters establish a physical agility test that, one, does not discriminate, two, reflects essential functions of the job, and at the minimum includes testing the following, A, fear of heights, B, fear of confinement, C, muscle strength.
Wait, where is it at?
I'm on Indiana code, I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you, something like that.
No, 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 no. And that's what I said, when I think that language should match.
Okay, I'm good with that. I don't know where, so the state, we need to meet the state code, so I'm.
And the state codes are changing July 1st, by the way, so.
Yes. So does anybody have a question? I have a question, so is there any, from the firefighters? Are there any, with the state statute that is changing, and I do have a copy of it too, are there, we have to meet it, but are there any concerns we're spelling that out? Or is it okay just to call out the state statute into our ordinance? Is what I'm thinking, is that we say CPAT based on state statutes, blah, 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 blah.
I think that would be fine. The certified physical agility test, the MAC puts on, and the aerial climb that we do, I do believe would fall under the state statute.
And can we get some type of confirmation of, can we reach out and say, hey, this state statute goes into effect July 1? We're going to, our goal is to send our, you know, probation, whatever you call it, over to the MAC for these. Are, do you need all of the minimum requirements of that?
Yeah.
And that way we have it documented and we don't have to worry about it going forward. And if something comes back and say, well, you're going to send them to the MAC? Well, there's one thing, it could be one little thing, but one thing is enough for it to be us to be out of compliance.
Now, just so everybody who are retalking, our suggestion is to let them take care of this themselves.
Right.
The applicant. So we're not specifically sending them there, that's the closest facility that I'm aware of for the CPAT.
But do we want, do, okay, so are we forcing them to a particular location or, because let's say for instance?
No, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, for instance, we have someone that's down in Evansville or somewhere. And then they've come up and done the testing and they passed that, now we want them to go do the physical agility. Are we saying they can go to any facility that needs the state requirements?
I think it's good for two years.
Yes, it's a cert.
It's a card, it's a certified test that you, I'm sorry, it's a card you take with you, because you can take it anywhere in the United States, as long as that department, you know, accepts it. And it's good for two years, I believe, right? They could, they could already have the card, they don't have to go get it after the, some of these lateral transfers maybe would have it, of course they wouldn't.
But that would be different, lateral transfer, this would be brand new. So we're talking brand new, we're not going to talk lateral transfers. If we're talking brand new and someone comes to test and now they go back home to wherever they're from, and then.
They can get it anywhere they want, as far as, it's a national, it's the same test everywhere going. You have to have certified equipment to do that test. It's got to be the bought and equipment, it's very strict, they're very strict on it.
So is there a, is there a website for the certified physical agility test?
I believe you can just put it, CPAT, I think, and it'll pop up.
Dot org or something?
Or you can get on the MAC, they have a description of it.
There are testing centers throughout the state.
But I'm saying, you go out and you have somebody from Michigan or Chicago.
It's, so it's national, there's testing centers throughout the nation.
Exactly, same thing.
Okay.
And I don't have a card myself, does anybody?
I.
Does it even tell you what state you did it in? I don't even know if it does. I think it's.
See, that's where my concern, so I just want to make sure if, so we say we're going to this and then we're going to allow a new candidate to come test, written test, do the aerial, then you got 30 days, complete your CPAT.
We have, we're going to work 30 days to show us a card.
Okay.
CPAT does have a website.
It does, okay.
And that's basically what we do right now for our physical ability. We copied it, we made our own equipment, it's exact, as close as you can get to it. And we can't do it, we can't be certified because we have to buy the certified equipment.
Okay.
We can't do it. We checked on it back when Larry Butcher was involved in it, he started this whole thing with the CPAT for us to switch over to this physical agility test. And it was, it would have cost us, I think it was well over $100,000 for all the equipment. And so we just made our own. Then it worked quite well, but like Nick was pointing out, you're looking at, I mean, we have to look at the records, but I want to say it's about $3,000 to $4,000 to put that CPAT on, our physical agility test. And that's one day, like you said, years ago, we've had, we're going to do it two days. You're going to sell that easily. And it comes, you know, the merit commission does pay for it, but it ultimately comes from the city offices.
And this is an out-of-pocket expense for the.
For the applicant. That's what the majority of the departments do. I can't say all of them, but a lot of them just expect you to do that on your own.
And we've been taking care of that for.
Well, we do our own physical agility, so yes, we've been providing it in city pace. Like Nick said, the firefighters come in, it's overtime. We set it up out there at our Hitchcock Training Center.
So are there any cons to doing it this way?
This way, well, we don't, we don't have that expense, we don't have that liability, we don't have to schedule it, it'll be a thing off of the merit commission's back.
Do you think it'd be a barrier for applicants?
That's where, we've tried to do this in the past and that's where we run into. I had, when Ricky Jackson was the president of the commission, we had it really close. And then it boiled down to what they were talking about or discussing then was maybe the merit commission can still pay for, you know, the fee over there at the MAC. But when they went to talk to the MAC, the individual has to sign up, you know, online and do all the paperwork and pay individually. Now, whether they're willing to do something different, I don't know.
Maybe, so let me ask this, I, I'm going to use an example. It's not this, but it's another online thing. So I had some students that were going to do driver's ed. So I reached out to the company and I gave them enough money in the pot for five students. And then he was able to draw down the money and set them up so that they would have, when they called in or went online to set it up, they could put their local code in and get paid. They could pay for it that way, yes.
What if, if they pass everything and we go to hire them, we reimburse them for their, for their CPAT testing? So that doesn't make it against, you know, that doesn't make it.
How long is?
It gives them an incentive to try to get on.
The bonus is for this year or next year?
This year.
This year?
One year, I think it was.
So you're looking at 23?
Was that?
Is it to the end of 23?
He said it was this year, but it's the 31st.
We don't have anybody leaving as of right now.
Right.
Until next year, so unless somebody decides to escape, but. I mean, you're looking at $180 to $200 investment. And that's why Nick had the great idea of saying, well, not everybody has to go do, get the CPAT card. It's just, once you pass the written, pass the lateral climb, then you're in contention for getting a spot on our list.
Right.
Then you go do it. I mean, you're looking at, what is a firefighter going to make in 2023?
Oh, I agree, I would borrow $60,000. $60,000 investment.
Right. $61,070.
Yeah, I'm going to make with it, I just want to make sure you.
I understand where you're coming from, you know, you might not get applicants that don't have that money, but.
Okay. As long as you're okay with it, I am, I'm just making sure.
As long as they know when they start out. I tried to do this a couple of years ago, so.
Okay.
To get the CPAT involved, you know, get the MAC involved and get the applicants to just do it there, so. So our next priority, so what do we want to?
I'm going to listen to my, Nick, what are you looking forward to?
What's the urgency?
All right, councilman? I'm fine. Send the applicant over there, let them take care of it.
Yeah.
Go. All right. So Nick, what was our next?
Evaluations was one of the topics.
Number nine, second page, and this was, I don't know what number it was on my sheet, it would just go off of.
54-475.
Correct. So I know at least some of you have heard the merit commission on the ball about this and I think, Andy, you heard us talk a little bit about it, the merit commission meetings. The, you want to get rid of the PAC phone frame? We've tried and tried and tried to get it to where it was a valuable tool, but it just hasn't. Uh, we've tried and tried and tried to, uh, get it to where it was, uh, a valuable, valuable tool, but it just hasn't done. It's, uh, the human factor, you know, you've got different captains that give out different scores, and it has come down in previous, uh, last three, four years, maybe even longer, I don't know, uh, guys have noticed that, it's, it's a fraction of a point that can get you a promotion or not.
Okay.
So we got captains that are, um, giving just sky-high ratings, and other captains that are a little reserved, and, and, and it is, uh, it's just not right, so.
You take the subjectivity out of it.
So we wanna take that out, um, I think, uh, I originally said eighty percent and twenty, put eighty percent on the written, and I think we might have to go back to that, Nick, because Steve and I were looking at it earlier today, and somewhere in the state organs, it says twenty percent max.
Right, seniority and past performance cannot be more than twenty percent each.
You have to cross that out, you have to go eighty percent competitive and twenty percent seniority.
And that's pursuant to Indiana Code thirty-six, dash eight, dash three point five, dash thirteen.
So, in, in the code, are those the only two, so in the code, it has written examination, it has seniority and past performance, that you can use? Any other categories?
Um, well, interview, I believe, is listed as well as a factor that you can consider.
Only way I would consider that is if it's the same people interviewing all of them, no differences. Did you used to do that?
Uh, we had, I was on that, well, the last, last year we did that, look, Amy, Bob was there, myself, and.
For promotions though, or for applicants?
Applicants.
Applicants.
So, yeah.
Well, this is promotion.
Promotion, yeah. Okay. We do the same thing for each person.
Correct.
Same questions.
They have, yes, they do.
Right down.
And then you score them.
Right.
Okay, score them, yep.
We used to have those, but then some people were getting perfect twenties, and that's how they got their job, or they also got jobs, that's when they took the pass fail out.
That was like.
Only those people got it.
But basically, yeah, we basically wanna take the human factor out of it, cause your, your written competitive examination is a number, and your years of service is a number.
I'm, I'm good with that.
You can't change it.
Are, are there, were there, any objections, cause now we're going back to eighty, twenty?
None that I know of, um.
That, that's to meet the state statute.
We would still do, just so you know, we would still do our evaluations, we do, um, every six months we do an evaluation, and then my thought is that now we will actually be able to get a decent number from the captains, a realistic number, and if we see somebody lacking in a skill, then we can give them, you know, specific training to elevate, that's what the whole, you know, evaluation is for, is to elevate a, uh, employee's performance. So hopefully we can actually use it for what it's intended for, as far as I see it.
Okay.
And then our, um, I think our fourth priority was the fifty-four, one fifty-six, right Nick, in Brett Ward.
Okay.
Uh, determination of final rating, um, so years ago, we used to get points for education, we took the points away from education, and, well, I don't know if we did, I'm not saying we did, but.
Well, I, I can give you a little background, one of the, one of the issues we had with, um, one of the issues that came up was with the education piece, that you had a lot of volunteer firefighters, not local residents.
Okay.
Who had fire science or any training, so people were getting a leg up over local residents, because, yeah, I, I belong to a, uh, you know, a volunteer fire department out in the county, or, um, I live in Timbuktu, and we have, you know, and so what was happening is we were getting less Michigan City residents, at least at the time, and then we were getting mostly, yeah, I'm a volunteer firefighter, I got fire science, I mean, so that's what was happening, and I think that's where the change came.
Exactly, no, I, I, I remember, but can, but we took out, I think they took out the education completely, except for, um, which is a great thing, they still allowed some points for military, but what we were thinking, and I don't, I'm speaking myself.
What is the, what is the residency?
What, eighty percent, ten percent?
So if we could just lower that and maybe match education with residency, I think education, education is important.
Do, do the AK Smith, uh, students get fire science, is that included in education?
That would be the fire one, fire two, so if we add education, yeah, it would probably fall under, yes.
They would get, if they completed the one and two, I think this year they were only, only able to get the firefighter one, I believe, so.
So let, let me ask you about the residency requirement, are, so what has happened that, is there some type of con or something that we haven't been able to get enough people on our list, or we haven't been able to hire people, or why do we change it? If, if, is something broken?
So, uh, if I could speak as a firefighter, I, I guess the question would be, what do we value? Do we value hiring people that live in city more, or do we value acquiring skilled, qualified, ready-to-go candidates?
That's what the lateral transfer program for, is for, so let me say this, from my perspective, and I said this years ago, just because somebody can get a hundred percent on the test, don't mean they can carry somebody and save their life, or have those instinctive skills to do the job either, cause I, I, I got a sister, oh man, this is on recording.
Go like this.
Who, who's very, uh, knowledgeable, but it has, you know, sometimes doesn't have those common sense things, like street, whatever you wanna call it.
Those are restricted.
But, um, yeah, and I, I just, so I was always leery of that, because when you, when you do that, just cause somebody can score high, doesn't mean they're gonna be a good brother or sister to you in the fire department.
But then what about section B with the consent judgment, that spells out certain points for Michigan City residency?
That's a whole nother, that whole topic is a whole nother crazy topic.
Right, so.
But it's in there, and, and until it's taken out, you have to follow it.
So let me go back, so what section is that, one, for, one one fifty-six D, as a boy talks about the consent judgment, number of points. Fifty-four, one fifty-six, let me go to that, I have it. So we have sixty percent for written, fifteen percent for residency, fifteen percent for personal interview, military service, or other current, two percent, and.
One percent.
Child, or, okay. Let's see the consent degree. So, and it, it says, in order to promote the enforcement, the nineteen seventy-eight consent judgment enhances safety of citizens, and it says applicants will receive three points towards their composite score for having resided in Michigan City for two consecutive years, and we leave their application, and it goes on, um, it's fifteen. So let me ask this question then, um, as far as the, so we have written at, and I think, I remember being in the same conversation about, um, all the percentages for each of the areas, so we had, I think we changed, does he have written, written is that sixty percent?
Sixty-seven.
There we, I'm, I'm sorry.
Written examination, sixty-seven percent, issues of city residency, fifteen percent, personal interview, fifteen percent, military service, either current or not, nothing less than honorable discharge, two percent, five child or firefighter or police officer, if you don't line of duty, one percent.
Let me ask this question about the written examination. Yeah, I'm just gonna ask it, um, and this is your personal opinion, I, I, I'm just curious, uh, cause that's weighted the heaviest, the written examination. Has your top scores been your top performers? I mean, just, I'm just asking, I, in your classes, like, when you have graduates, like, for instance, I know we have some graduates that did really well over in the academy, but on our written exam, for our, just to get them in the door and get them on the list, and then we've hired them, and someone who's number one versus number eight on the list, has that really been, has there been a big difference? And.
We've, yeah, we went through a lot, eight or nine on this last list, and, yeah, it, uh,
I'm, you know, I'm asking that, yeah, just because I, I'm just thinking about it, and I want you all, I want you all to think about it, because we, we, we put, um, a lot of weight on tests.
Yeah.
Yeah. And people that test well don't necessarily can, can communicate well.
No, you're true.
And so my question is, if we wanna put something on education, is a written, written exam too heavy, if we place something there instead? Because I don't wanna get away from the residency.
No, you could go.
How are the new recruits doing it? Some of them tested very hot.
I'm trying to think who's, uh, I think it's, uh, it's the, the top.
Top four were pretty close.
Yes, that's what I'm getting, the top four.
And they always are.
And then after that, it kinda hit miss, I'd call it.
Right, but it's not, it's not hit or miss that they can't do the job, it's just hit or miss whether.
The good testing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you pass, I just see testing as, you pass, you pass.
Well, you pass, fail, but you gotta pass to move on, yeah, if you fail, you're not gonna.
But if I score higher on the test, I'm gonna get more points.
Let me finish, Andy, let me finish, so then, so getting back to the question that Andy asked originally.
I'm sorry.
So the top performers on the test, so how do they pan out?
They can.
Say the top five on the test, how do they pan out?
Well, that, I.
Do they, do they become top performers, or do they just kinda fall in line with the other firefighters who go for merit? That's, that's all.
We have to, well, ask the merit commission, probably have to do some research there, because I don't see those numbers.
Well, but this is what happens, so I get a hundred, so I get sixty-seven points.
Right.
I get an eighty, I get fifty, whatever, it, it determines my ranking on the list, the written examination piece, so my whole thing is, is that weighted too high, and do we put some type of education upon it, take away from the written exam?
Take some off of the written and put it, yeah.
Doesn't the CPAT put you higher on the list too, or you go on CPAT?
No, no, pass fail.
Okay. Well, you gotta go with it this way, you got a firefighter coming to your house, cause you want a person that's gonna get a good test, making it a hundred percent, but you want somebody that's gonna come in and pick you and carry you out of there.
And, and be compassionate, and do all those other things.
That's what I mean, that's the bottom line.
That's my point.
Pretty hard to tell them.
And, and, and I will say this, somebody who's a Michigan City resident may know somebody in your family, and they're gonna pull them out, and they're gonna, there's a different connectivity to that, and I believe that.
Yeah, I feel there should be points for being a resident.
Yeah, but.
Oh, yeah, we're not saying, no, I'm, I'm, you can't do that, I don't mind, no.
One of these kids is fifteen percent.
You segregate somebody, it, it, it's supposed to be.
All equal, I know, so my question is, the written examination.
You could go.
Piece, cause I, I still like, do we have anything for, we don't have anything for physical, they just gotta pass, right?
Pass fail.
It, it should be the same thing with the written exam.
I agree with you, I agree with you.
Well, you could go, it's sixty, what is it?
Sixty-seven percent.
Fifty-seven, go to fifty percent, or fifty-two percent.
I'm just thinking about the education piece, I like, I like having the education piece, especially if we got, uh, with our program, now that our programs have been established at AK Smith for a while.
Right.
I think it's good to use, have something for education, I just don't want it to remove anything from, in my opinion, from the residents, so.
And you could, you could actually pinpoint that education, in the past, it was just a broad range of certificates or completion of courses, i- if you could put in there EMT, that would save the city a lot of money too, cause then we wouldn't have to put them through an EMT class. So if you give them points for having, having an EMT license, that would be a benefit, and that's gonna be something that, not your everyday volunteers will do that.
Okay, it'd be a couple of things in that one.
Yeah, you could do EMT, you could do fire one, fire two, well, fire one, fire two is gonna be all volunteers are gonna have that, so. You'll be opening it up to them, which is fine, I'm sorry, not much, it's fine, cause then you have an educated person, and it's already showing some interest in the, in the, you know, fire service, but.
Do they get EMT, they have a program at AK Smith, but does, uh, but does the fire science, do they do EMT as well?
At, uh, they have EMT course there at the, um.
They're separate.
They're separate.
Separate courses.
So, and any local college, well, not, I shouldn't say any, a lot of your local colleges have EMT classes at, so. It's out there, if you really wanna be in the fire service, then that's what you do, and you go get your EMT license nowadays, along with your firefighter one and two, but, in, in reality, though, if you get a, and what I've seen is firefighter one and two, though, even these people that come out of the AK Smith, I'm probably still gonna send them to a career academy, because I want them to get that feeling of a career academy.
Yeah, I, I, I mean.
They'll be repeating it, which is not a bad thing, they're gonna just learn.
But I just think they get point, if they got points for it.
Yeah, no, it would get them higher on the list, but I would, I would throw in there like EMT class or EMT license, it's actually gonna be changed, isn't it? What's the name of it, gonna be known, or it is, didn't they change it?
It's EMT, National Registry.
National Registry is closer to the now, still EMT.
They spend less money training, if so, so if someone had an EMT, you spend less money training.
Correct, correct, and we get them on shift quicker, save a lot of time, and they're already, I mean, if they, it's the same thing that they would be doing anywhere else, if they have an EMT license, it's, it's just statewide, so.
Y'all might have to take that back and kinda think about that a little bit.
Yep, we can.
If I could backtrack a little bit, so when you asked about top performers, we've had had numerous top performers that came from different cities, that were passed over by Michigan City residents, but they couldn't, even if they scored a perfect on the written, they couldn't, they couldn't beat the Michigan City resident, just because of how high that is weighted. We have a military service at two percent, and then we've got the residency at fifteen percent, it's just very high.
Okay, with increase in the military, so.
I would think that, that would weigh, is an option. Or just as much weight as a resident.
What if we, if we dropped the written score down and add some.
You can use some other stuff.
Yeah, well, so that's, when I, when I typed it out, it did, I did say it needs to be workshop, I knew we'd have to play around
Yeah.
with the numbers, but I believe that the residency points are just weighted very high.
Do we, but are, how many, are we getting a lot of residents that are applying, that are actually applying?
We have historically had a lot of residents that apply, and then we actually have out-of-city residents, or out-of-city, uh, personnel that have been skipped over and had to wait for the next test, because just the way the cards play.
But I think with the, if we're gonna move forward with the lateral transfer program, that kinda takes care of the, that whole issue with the city resident requirement and the, the number of people, because now you have laterals that will be able to come in, and, and are we, does, well, the place is different, would there be a limit on the number of laterals that we could do? Because would laterals be able to come in for, so you have your list, is there only a certain time period that laterals will be able to come into this department? How would that work?
That would, I think, be a part of the fire merit offense, how that hiring process, how the lateral transfer hiring process would be initiated.
Because they talk about that, we don't have many, many vacancies, and if we have a list, and now we got laterals that wanna come in.
So that's, that, that would be called, to me, that would be called a, a true lateral transfer, which is, is not, I don't believe that's what we're shooting for here. We're shooting for if, 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 like, there's, let's say there's two guys that have left our department, their other departments, they're not happy, they wanna come back. So they have, anybody that wants to come here has to go through the hiring process, I believe, they have.
So they have to get on the list?
Yes.
They have to, they have to come back just like.
It's just, this is just an incentive, this is an incentive to get them to come back, this is just, this is monetary, basically, is what the lateral transfer is, that's how I see it.
Am I not?
Correct.
It's an incentive, because if, let's say I leave and I wanna come back, I have to come back and apply.
You still have to go through everything. You still have to go through everything.
Go through all the testing, wait for a spot open, and then I start out at the bottom again. I start right out at the bottom again, no matter how long I was here, I start right at the bottom.
So, there is a true hundred percent lateral transfer. And, and cities can do it, but it's under certain. Conditions like emergencies, I, I think South Bend did it a while back, they were just so short. That they did this lateral transfer, it was just a temporary thing, they took.
A little bit more difficult for the police, that would for the fire, police is always higher, I mean, there, there are always. There's always a, a gap, so it's a little different, it's not a waiting list. But now, I'm like, if you, you rarely, seldomly have like more than a couple of firefighters, so now you got this list. So now I see the dilemma, if you got a lateral transfer person that's not local. They lose fifteen points off the, off the bat, even though they're fully trained, is what you're saying.
Yeah, let me think about that.
I, I, with respect, I gotta disagree with you on our spread between military credit and locals. There are a lot of transferable skills from people that, but I'm biased.
Well, I didn't say anything, I said we should increase.
Yeah, I think we really, I mean, I mean.
So I'm not sure you're really disagreeing, cause I.
No, that's okay, good point. Yeah, I can have it be honorable discharge.
Oh yeah, that has to be a part of it, you, but you can't, you don't have to.
It's in the consent judgment, you can't even ask them.
You're not even allowed to ask.
Not even allowed to ask if they're, well, when he, when they come in and resolve, if they're out of the military, let me see your discharge papers. And it'll say honorary, honorary or not.
Yeah, but you're not allowed to ask.
But you have to still have to have proof that they were in the military and that showed a discharge, beginning to fourteen.
The consent decree clearly states that you can't use it against them.
Well, not saying against them, proof that they were in the military.
And, and the consent decree is still in effect, it has no expiration date on it. And when Judge Sharp signed that, he made sure all Michigan City departments had problems with hiring minorities. So that was part of the, the whole consent decree. To move the residence number around, I don't think it'd be right. I, I, in fact, I think it'd be violating the court's court order. Now, bringing education in, that's good. If you do it that way, that's good, but moving the resident number around. Is what got us into the consent decree and got us into federal court and the judge ruled against Michigan City and all of its departments. So.
But, but the military experience, I agree, should go, I, I, I'm okay with the military experience, but. What about um, so lateral transfers though, they would get the education points.
Um, so it, I mean, it depends on how you want to do the weights route, I think you might have been on something with lowering the, the ratings down. And then taking points from that, maybe throw like ten, ten points for laterals.
Or education, education.
Yeah, education.
And then five, at least five percent, I would say for military minimum. Uh, how many do they get?
Two.
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 Gee, oh, I'm glad it was mentioned.
I know, I mean, it's weird. Okay, alright, so that's a little, but I mean, I think you can literally go down to fifty, fifty percent on the rate.
I'm trying to find the beginning to fourteen to see if it says.
And the court says that you can't use dishonorable discharge or hit military against the, so we got two hands here.
Well, if you had dishonorable discharge, you wouldn't be bragging about it and bringing it to the table. You know, I would not be telling somebody I was in the military if you got discharged that way.
For some reason, I can't, at one point in time, you guys used to, the fire department, other departments used to ask about it. And, and it was something else to do with the pension as well, you had to go see the, the city's pension doctor at the time. To do, to, at the time, which was messed up as well, but. Again, you have, you're gonna give them points, you're gonna let them use two points. If I went to the army and I got dishonorable discharge, can I still get my two points? Why?
I got the.
Well, I think there was a little bit more than that and I, I think too, remember this is the seventies. As far as some of the people that were coming out of the military during a certain wartime, cause I have family members too. So there was a lot of things happening that aren't happening today, so we have to reflect back on. That was, you know, fifty years ago that. This all happened, but let me get away from that real quick and go back to the point. Um, so that we stay on track, we're gonna be here, um, we'll be here forever, but um. One of the things, so what I wrote down was, and this was just my stab at it upfront, was fifty percent for written. Twenty percent uh, for seniority. Wait, 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 I'm in the wrong section.
You're not senior, you have.
I'm in the wrong section, okay, I'm in fifty percent, I'm on the wrong section, fifty percent for written examination. And fifteen percent.
Resident.
So the fifteen percent residency, the personal interview is fifteen. Is that fifteen?
Yeah, thirteen.
So that's eighty, and then I had ten. For education and I had five for military.
So isn't the personal interview, wouldn't that be very subjective as well?
Only. I, I like personal interviews myself, but it's only, it's the same um, two or three, the same three people interviewing. Uh, all of the candidates.
That's what we do.
It is, they, they have a um, they have it all pre-printed out, same questions, exact same questions, and then they score them from one to five, is it?
That's kind of high though, fifteen percent.
I know from personal experience, it doesn't work out, it's not fair. There's attitudes and there's people that know people, whether it's three people or not. I was lucky, all the people. I've had five sign here, I didn't know any, I didn't one person out there and.
So. So the interviews are. So it's done by the fire, fire commission, not outside or within, not outside, okay.
But there's still personnel in the conflict. What?
It's a very small community, so chances are just.
I told you, let's talk about it, we need to change it, let's change it.
I just know that from personal experience that the interviews are unfair.
Okay.
Thank you.
I guess you're a good user of interview.
Well, you are an interviewer, you're a fireman, when I'm.
But like I said, I, I can tell you, well, personal experience that I don't believe that the interview process was fair.
Okay.
Um, but I don't think it should be used for points.
So how, how would we use it just as a?
I just maybe feel the person, I get how they feel, I, I just. You know, I know how my first interview went and I ended up, I didn't get on off that list because nobody left.
Okay.
But that was the one where I walked out, I said, wow, that was just.
Weird.
Wasn't weird, but it was like, that wasn't much of an interview, it was just a bullshit session and. Yeah, hey buddy, good job. It really was. It really what it boiled down to is they found out I was military and they asked me. How true to, to the military that it was like compared to the TV show JAG, I'm like, I don't know, I wasn't in the Navy. So I cried, but it turned into like just hey, you know?
They didn't have specific questions up there?
I ended up just offensive discussion for like ten minutes and I'm like, alright.
It's different, it's different now.
Yeah, it's, I mean, so I, I didn't dig on that.
So we, we don't want to talk, so if we want to be objective, have the most objective way of doing this. Personal interview, what would be a timing?
Well. Not our, so the city police merit commission, and what we did, we went through and went, had specific questions that were to be asked. Before interviews, okay, so they went through and agreed, I think it was fifteen questions or whatever it was. They agreed on what the questions were gonna be and they didn't stray outside those questions unless there was a follow-up. And I went over it all, but that, everybody seems content with the way they do it over there, it seems fair. Uh, rather than just bullshit, like you said.
That makes sense.
I mean, it can be, I, I'm on the fence with it, it could be, as I said, if you lay it out and you stick to it. You, you could, it could probably be good and useful, but. It's still subjective, you know? You're, you're, you're listening to somebody's answer and you're like, I didn't really like that answer.
So when you score it, I guess my question would be, so um. I think the last time I uh, did interviews, I, I had the questions and had their pages. And then we had a point system and, and then we explained how many points for certain things, right? And then we all came back with our scores, our three scores. And I always had outliers that were way too high, way too low. But for the most part, for people, after we, we had our discussion on how we're gonna interview. Everybody came in within a point or two for each candidate, except for one, you have ones, and we threw out. We, we always had four or five interviewers, we always threw out the ones that were announced. We did, and because, I'm like, how did they get that out of that interview? I mean, you have some that do that, it's like, what were they, what were they seeing that was so extremely different? The only other thing I, I would say on interviewing, um. And, and I always had people outside of our department do the interviews, so that was different. I didn't have anybody on our team, I, I would let them score and I would have a final say. But I would ask people from departments that directly work with our department, and this is at NISORS. Do the interview, that will participate in the interview, so. That helped because it wasn't, you, you guys determine disciplinary things and all that and. You know, and that can be intimidating for a candidate, they may just interview badly that day because. They know that, okay, future wise, you're, you're my discipline, you're my.
They get nervous.
Yeah, so um, so I don't know, have we ever done anything like that? I think it's always been with the merit commission, as far as I know. I don't know, any thoughts on that? If there were other people that participated in.
It was always the merit, when I interviewed, it was the merit commission. It was this last year, I'll tell you, I'd say. How many was, nine or something like that? This is forty years ago. When I interviewed.
Nineteen eighty.
Things have changed.
Can, can you, can you legally take the interview out?
It's not, it's not to. The interview.
You want to interview, so you.
For the final rating?
Yes.
So I don't think there's, I didn't see, look, um. What year are we on?
We are um.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four, one one two, one fifty-six.
Yeah.
Okay. But what, on this list here, we're up here, twenty-six.
Well, yeah, we talked about these.
Yeah, I didn't find the state code on that one, on that section. It just said, I think it said the merit commission should consider.
Right, that's why I interviewed you.
So it's, I mean, so we all have the flexibility, I mean.
I don't know if you can eliminate that.
Between the council and the fire merit commission and the firefighter, it's a determination if, if you're gonna make a change.
You gotta see somebody, they assume they are, you might have three hands, and one guy's gonna want me. I mean.
Well, that's kind of a.
Well, that's kind of a, but your way of putting it, because we do have a guy that only has one arm.
Well, he comes with one arm and to an interview, what do you say?
You don't say anything, you just act like.
I know you don't say, I know you don't say anything, but.
So. So. So what is the most important, um, when you, when you look at. So the written exam, that's just your, that's just setting your minimum standard, the written exam, right? So, that's, you know, fifty percent. It's all those other things that.
As far as the, what it's worth.
Okay. If you start there and then you start, and you all can take this back and we'll have enough discussion about it, but. Then you bring in education, you got military service, um, the interview and the residency. So we got thirty-five percent, basically if you leave the written exam at fifty and the resident, residency at fifteen. You got thirty-five points left. To work with, if you want to bring in education, personal interview, military service. You know, what, you know, think about what, you know, the administration and then what the firefighters would recommend or something like that. And remember that education supports the lateral transfer process. Because basically they will be coming with education. And then that kind of solves some of that and then you got someone who's lateral, who is military. There's your, your points. You know, because how many, how many residents are we gonna have that have military?
This day and age, not too many.
So, so it's kind of a even thing, it allows residents, but it allows the lateral process too. So it kind of gives you your, your balance of that, so I, that's what I would say, if you guys come up with some recommendations on. Where, where would that thirty-five points come if we lowered the written to fifty? Cause all cats, that, everybody who can uh, take a test, don't mean they're gonna carry up and fly the stairs. I, I, I've always believed that, so. Um, so that one, we can come back to that one and then we have a couple more here, I do want to get through all of them, just so that. If we come back for a follow-up, we can do it at the fire merits. And that's okay. Um, we had, so going back to number one, we had application for employment, replace it with the announcement of recruitment. Um, and just uh, social media platforms, I'm okay with that. Yeah, having all these specific dates and stuff is probably not the way to, to do it, so that was number one. Cover number two, we gotta come back to, um, number three, that's our, um, that's our CPAT. Four, the eligibility, we'll come back to that, but um, I have in my mind what I would like to see, but you all decide on what you wanna. What you think is feasible for that. Uh, eligibility list, we're taking that out.
So that would be, so if we do the physical agility test ourselves, they record a time and that would be the tiebreaker. If we go to the CPAT, then it's just pass fail, there's no times. So we'd be striking out the tiebreaker with the physical agility test that we put on.
Okay.
So that would be contingent on number three.
So if we take that out, is there no tiebreaker anymore?
I'm just gonna ask that, how, how do you determine that?
I think you have something for a tiebreaker. Whatever it might be.
The written exam.
You could go back to it, really, stop thinking.
No, you go back to that.
It's actually a good point.
Then we go back to who's test best.
What? This is after, but this is after everything.
Right, you go back to.
I would say you'd have to go off the test score.
Yeah, that's after everything, if they end up with the same thing.
Well, we're talking about somebody had the same test score.
I knew you were gonna say that.
Well, no, we're talking about the final, the final.
They tied, so what if they had. What if they had eighty-seven on their test?
Same could be said about the physical agility time.
Yeah.
Physical condition should be. There's gonna be something outstanding, nobody's gonna get a hundred percent, everything the same.
Well, you know what?
Chances that is a bit.
This one, I guess you shouldn't.
You got a fifty-fifty chance when you're flipping.
That's what he did at Steel Mill.
You know what I mean? But see, we're still in a tie because.
Yeah, but I'm saying who applied first, five, that's neutral. You know, I'm talking about actually five, that's, that's such a.
Application date.
Yeah.
Right. What if it's laying in this mailbox for months?
It's post-stated.
Yeah, that's one, you're stringing it out there, I'm telling you. It's neutral.
They, they could drop the application off at our building and then we send it to city hall or.
As long as we got the date on it.
Don't you guys stand up receipts?
I, city hall does, we don't.
But, but again, how many applicants are we gonna get in?
The, the application has a date on it.
They, basically, when it comes in.
It has a date on it, they fill it in probably.
Keep the envelope, I just think it's, it's neutral enough and that somebody, when, when it comes in the mail, received.
Are you looking up a, on the application to see if it has a date on it when they, when they fill it out?
Should you?
Cause that's the only thing I can think of that.
That relieves everybody's. As far as you're my best pal and you're not, and stuff like that, and I know you, but I don't know you.
You're saying, are you gonna go to the written test first?
Are you gonna go to the written test first and none of the application due?
No, no, we're trying to remove all of it.
Well, if they're tied on the written, we're talking about time, they might be tied up.
They could be tied on everything.
They could be tied up the written test, they could be.
It, it is on the application today's date. So when they filled out, it has to be on.
So it would be.
So it has to be today's date, but when it's received, somebody should put a receipt date on that application.
Sometimes they do like they said, but if it comes to city hall, they do, but if it goes to the fire.
They need to do it too.
But what if they fill it out and they hold on to it for like four or five weeks?
They did and they hold on to it. It should be the receipt date.
Yeah, right. Date stamp.
The receipt date.
We could. Oh, they need that and just have them send it to city hall and exclude us.
Right. That too, cause the clerk stamps everything.
Yeah, that's. The possibility that most lives in so many ways.
So let them lose it.
Well, it should go, but I think it should go.
Exactly, when it came in.
Right, it'll be stamped, it'll be dated.
If it was all digital, there's a timestamp on all of that.
Sure. One day.
Why, why would, why would we take it? It's fire department, we have to, we think do it anyway.
I know, we should.
Exactly.
I think that.
City hall.
Yeah, let it, you sent it to city hall?
Yep, that would make the try, that would break the tie.
Okay, so tie break, we're talking about application. Application receipt. All right. Uh, let's see, so that was fifty-four, that's one thirty-seven, fifty-seven. Uh, final rating rejection, okay, section six, number six. Notification of final rating, rejection of applicants. And it says create a new section that states if CPAT card is not presented by deadline.
That's something we'd have to add if, if we do go with the certified CPAT, yeah.
Okay. And that's what we were talking about, maybe thirty days after they pass the.
Probably, whatever, whatever timeframe we feel misses, forty-five days, whatever. Thirty, forty, whatever.
I'm gonna go back a little bit, one that's already a ten, listed under one five eight, but ten has been disadonably discharged. If we can't ask that pursuant to the consent decree, then we can't have that in.
Oh, that's it.
That's my turn. I wanna read that part of the consent decree.
And.
Are you done?
I'm done. And being so in the army, to be part of the community supply.
Oh, wow.
Doing the.
You know, you gotta think about it though, somebody gets out of the military, disadonably discharged. More often than not, they're gonna be a felon, so they're not getting on me anyway, so let's really get it out there. You get out disadonably discharged, you ain't just skating through life, man.
Now, yes, that's correct.
I just read an article on it.
Did you know? Oh, there's always some kind of.
Just today, for people that were discharged for being gay until the, until after the don't ask or don't tell policy. They were, many were dishonorable discharge.
You're right.
And they're trying to change it back, but depending on, they won't do a general discharge. Was the one in between dishonorable discharge.
I don't know.
Less than honor. That's the best thing we can get, it's less than.
General.
My point is it's not fair because now they can't do it at all. And this wasn't that long ago, but just put it out there.
Wow. So we made, so you'll read that, if we need to remove it, I got this noted.
Okay. Where it is.
So we can't. Okay, so I'll remove that. Okay, wow. You got more than I.
General discharge.
Uh, okay, uh, appointments.
That's what used to mean.
Yeah. But it's fifty-four dash one sixty appointment.
Well, that's a, that's a sentence in there we saw which makes no sense. Whenever there are less than three names on the eligibility list, the commission may refuse to make an update of that list. Why don't we make, why would they not?
Yeah, why would we refuse? Yeah, there's three people.
We have no idea why that's there.
Yeah, cause if we, if we need somebody.
We need somebody, we need somebody.
Right.
And we're down to one person on the list right now anyways.
Right.
So we've been.
So we want to strike that.
Strike that, yeah.
Fifty-four, sixty, fifty-six. Whenever there are less than, let me get that. Okay, I have that. All right, um, qualifications, okay, one seventy-two qualifications for, for promotion. It says, um, driver, remove the two years and do what?
Change it to. Change it to three.
Okay.
As a member of the fire department.
Three years. All right. And the.
So, and then that goes into my list. Uh, what Nick did was just instead of listing the stuff.
Is this?
We refer to mine, yes, correct. That would be down there under number nine.
Number nine.
Oh, no.
My number nine, fifty-four dash one seventy-two. Uh, basically I talked to, well, I mean, I discussed it with them also, but I talked to my training officer, deputy chief. Uh, mostly the training officer I got some of this from, uh, for the driver operator. I also agree that three years as a member would be, uh, better than the two years.
Yep.
Um, the training officer recommended quoting NMPA one-on-two, oh, I'm sorry, one thousand and two. Uh, chapter four, five and six, and what that does is that covers a lot of your driver operator testing. That they need to have to be a driver operator. He thought it would be best just to, uh.
Refer.
Refer to those. Uh, lieutenant, uh, one year as a driver and I'd like to see fire officer one. Uh, which, when you become fire officer one, then you also have, you have to be instructor one. So you have to go through the instructor one course, you have to do, um, strategy and practice class.
So for, for these that you have listed, like lieutenant, so does it spell it out in?
You want one?
One seventy-two, yeah.
No, the only thing you have to do is one, uh, years of service is what.
That's it?
That's it. Years of service. And that goes all the way up through. Uh, your captain is two years?
Four.
Captain, right, the way it's written right now, captain, one year as lieutenant, two years as a driver to test for captain.
Driver.
With no, there's no education requirements, basically.
Okay. So you're gonna add education requirements to.
Yes.
To be in, so basically these promotions are happening just because I've been here.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
And that's the way it's been for.
A long time?
Very long time. And then under.
Four years.
Yeah, and I, I have a thing on. When you become a battalion chief, and this is a merit system, and when I was on, when you became a battalion chief, you're locked. I couldn't test against a battalion chief and these guys get in a battalion chief and they're there for twenty-five years. They never left. So there, I had no opportunity to move up once I got to captain because all my battalion chiefs and chief's jobs were locked. So you should be able to test against a battalion chief. If it's a merit system, on your merit, and he's still got seniority points. But if you out test him and you bring him out, he shouldn't have that job.
You shouldn't keep that job.
You shouldn't keep that job. And I fought for that for years, wasn't, I was on because I had nowhere else to go.
That's fair. But then wouldn't you have to do that for all the?
Because they blocked all these battalion chiefs.
Wouldn't you have to do that for all the ranks? So it'd be fair? I'm, I'm just asking.
Well, once you're a captain, you're not testing against the captain, but a battalion chief, he's locked.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
You know, when a battalion chief gets in like, you know, I'm not gonna make names, we all know who they all were. And those guys were there for twenty-five years as battalion chiefs.
So where does that?
So for your assistant chiefs, what you're talking about is, uh, it's written now, two years as a captain.
Assistant chief, two years as a captain.
That's what it's written right now.
Yes.
Now, I'm also recommending, um, but if you implement my, uh, the requirements to be a captain, then they're gonna have all this other training under the captain.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
So they got.
It's gonna take some time to, to get there, but they're getting started.
Yeah.
There's also a, a little bit of difference between that first section and the state code. So the first section is just small wording, but I think again, we should match it up, okay? It says the candidate must, in the one seventy-two, a candidate must have completed the appropriate amount of time in service, okay? The statute, Indiana code says promotions to a rank must be from the next lower rank. In addition, the member being promoted must have served at the lower rank.
Yeah.
Not for time of service, so that's a difference. It could be.
At the lower rank. Right, so you have to be a driver, you have to be a lieutenant. You can't, you can't go from.
So there's a difference.
Back end into a.
Battalion chief run away.
Test toward the front end.
And again, that's Indiana code.
So we haven't been following that then.
Dash thirteen, it ends in that, dash thirteen one.
Just started, buddy.
So, so.
Every time Steve.
So, from a legal perspective, from your opinion, so if we make these changes and there are people, so they'll, they'll automatically be okay for the ones that are there that may not have had all this stuff. They're fine. They'll just be grandfathered and, but the new testing for promotions will follow these guidelines, basically.
And then we will have to set them, in a way, uh, probably three years out now. So that they can get these.
Trainings.
Yeah.
And, and what is the cost? I mean, so, I mean, now we're, what is the cost for the trainings?
Well, that's the other part of this whole thing we have to decide.
Yeah.
Is, uh, basically, I, I believe what other departments do is, I can't speak for all of them, but someone, you just, you have to do it on your own. Yeah.
I know about that.
Yeah.
So if you wanna become a captain, you need to test on your.
You think so?
Yeah.
How it's been is they give them five books and said, here, there's a hundred questions out of the five books. Is that right?
Probably not. But we're talking, Steve, we're talking about the, if we implement the promotion. If that's officer one and officer two class, the applicant would have to get that done on their own. Yeah. There's, because the. The classes are pretty much free over to Mac.
Okay.
But it's the time to get off of work, it's covering, you know, if, if, if the class is on their shift, then they have to get coverage for their shift. So there's something that needs to be worked out.
You know, you have eighty-three guys, eighty-seven guys, you're gonna send them all to educate to these classes and maybe five percent of them are gonna have to test for a higher rank, so you're wasting on money.
Yeah.
Because on guys that aren't gonna test, make guys that don't wanna test.
Right.
You know, some people wanna be a driver, some people wanna be a back end man, not everybody wants to be promoted. Cause there's a lot of things that come in with promotions, that's.
Responsibility.
That's, that's kind of a little.
When you drive the fire truck, it's about responsibility.
Okay. I don't like, where we go on that, cause I'm curious. I'm like, okay, so I wanna be promoted, so I gotta take time off and then I got.
Well, you gotta realize you get two days off.
I know.
You're on one, you're two off.
They get two off, I know.
You squeeze it in.
Okay. So no cost, except for the day off.
If you want to. Cause the district one is paying for it, the state is paying for it. Maybe Barrett knows how some other departments do it. Do you, you mean, you, you talk to a lot of people. Education functions, with the promotions and the classes, if they're required, if they're requiring certain education for promotion, do they? You know, I haven't asked around that much.
No, I've, I've never heard of, you know, talking, I've never really known many that, if any, that required to have certain things like that. I mean, I know of one that's so lax, it just, it's down to seniority.
But that's.
If me and Stan, if me and Steve were like, uh, senior cap, you know, we were captains and assistant chief spot comes open. Well, if he's got more time than me, well, hey, you're assistant chief now. They don't test, they don't do anything, it's just strictly off seniority, which was mine when I went, you know. But it's, it's, but I've not ran across anybody, at least in discussions, that it's like, well, you have to have this certification, you have to have that certification. I've never come across it. It's a test, you're, uh, some of them are even trying to get their really evaluations, but it's like, what we do? Test evaluation and then some of them actually have an interview board. Um, and then, you know, seniority.
Okay.
I do have, uh, I did text some people, I haven't got responses, like South Bend Fire. I, I sent them an email, asked them, I've met with them, talked to them about other issues.
Yeah, let me know, I mean, I'm, I'm friends, get friends with the chief over there in South Bend.
Um, can I ask you, I'm waiting for their, one of their assistant chiefs to get back with me. Um, I believe they have some, uh, I've talked to one of their captains once and they have some requirements, I just don't remember what he told me, it's been a while. Uh, I got a feeler out to Mission Walker and, um, Clay Fire also. I'm waiting for responses there, so.
So we can, so we can come back to, to that one then, but.
Yep.
But I, I do like not just have a seniority, so we, we'll have.
Well, it's, it's a written test and seniority.
Yes.
And I think one of Nick's, one of their, uh, I thought it was one of my years, Nick, but maybe not. That even under that written test for promotion, there's no pass fail. So we, I thought you wrote it in there somewhere, Nick, where we wanted to put a seventy percent pass fail.
We had talked about, but I don't think it happened.
It always was a pass fail on a promotionary test. Nothing, just for higher E's, there is.
There was one.
I was on. But not ours.
That's been a long time ago, that was, there were seventy-five percent and nobody passed the test except for the guys that got the twenties on their evaluations. Where the guys got promoted.
I understand, that's when they took that out of there.
Okay.
Cause we used to have, and now, it was to be seventy-five percent. I'm one of the guys that got a five percent on my evaluation and I said everything I wanted to say and I.
That's the reason why you got five percent.
No, I, I have a very, a very knowledgeable ball of construction.
I am.
I get, had to get a five percent on an interview.
I got.
And other guys are getting twents. He knows exactly how.
All right. No, that makes sense, so, okay. And then the last one that we did cover basically is very similar to, uh, so it's a training officer, fire marshal, and some of the requirements that we want for the fire marshal, which makes sense to me.
Correct, training officer and fire marshal, we added some things. And I still, um, in my section, I still feel there should be more for the actual fire chief and the deputy chiefs also. We can look at that some, another time too.
Well, I can, we can, we can talk about that one and then at the next fire merit commission, is it, I will not be back.
Can I ask a question about that?
Which one?
The last sentence, one seventy-nine, the training officer, fire marshal, it says, the training officer or fire marshal will be certified for the position. What does that mean certified? Are there tests that go along with it?
So that's the way it is right now.
Okay, but what does that mean certified?
That would be, right now it's just so vague. So our proposed, when you go to a class, you get a certification, kinda like a real estate class or any other, so if you take a class, you get a certification. Right now, we don't have a standard list of certifications that would fall by somebody for that position. The proposal right now.
No, but if you took these classes, you would get a certification.
Yeah.
You're asking first.
Yes.
So, certified, that could just mean a thousand different certifications.
Okay, so you want more specific.
This is a specific list.
Gotcha, okay.
So, I'm five by five with you on all the certifications, but I do think that we should have language in there that the merit commission has the authority to waive the requirements in the event nobody qualifies.
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, that's okay too.
Good one.
If nobody's ready to go, we put all this in there, right?
So, say that again.
We got a fire marshal, we got.
Say, say that one more time.
Well, we have language in there somewhere where the, the merit commission has the authority to waive certification requirements in the event no one's eligible for. Nobody, nobody fits all the requirements.
Nobody.
So the way we have.
The one that comes closest.
Yeah. The way we have to propose is that.
Person, yeah.
Uh, the way it's proposed right now is that those that would be appointed training officer, fire marshal, they would have a timeline to acquire those certifications.
Yeah, I like that.
So for the training officer, they have to have all of those within two years of being appointed.
Okay, that's a lot.
I got a thing here. Before we talk about these guys being appointed, they're not supposed to be appointed. Uh, Indiana code thirty six eight dash one dash twelve. There you go. It's an upper level policymaking positions. Help, uh, refers to positions held by the police chief or fire chief, and each position held by members of the police or fire department in the next rank paid rate immediately below the chief. If the authorized department is with the fire department, it'd be ten to two hundred one, and that's where we follow. So the chief and the deputy chief are the only ones that are done by the mayor, and everything else is done by merit, because it is a merit system. And that needs to be changed, and that has cost a lot of people a lot of money, because a chief years ago wanted to change because he didn't want to work with certain people, and it needs to be taken care of.
Let me ask you this question.
That's right.
And I'm being selfish. Okay, so what are you saying? That the merit commission gets to select who that is?
No, it's done by a test. You test by those positions.
You test for, for the fire marshal?
Yes. You, what you do is you test for assistant chief, and then the chief picks from those six foot, five or six guys, and he puts them in those positions where they need to be. And then you put, put those guys on shift, and then you don't have to pay so much overtime. I bet that would save you fifty to sixty thousand dollars.
So give me, give me that example again, so I'm sure I understand this. So you have to be a certain rank to become a fire marshal, is what you're saying?
Uh, yeah, you're going assistant chief, assistant chief. See, when I gave them a job, we had three battalion chiefs and three division chiefs. The three division chiefs were the fire marshal and so on. And then the, uh, there was a day captain, that was the public information officer, and that was the next captain that was promoted. That was their job. If they wanted to be a captain, that's the job they had to take. Unless that person was a captain and wanted to stay at that job, they could, they would, they could go on shift. Basically, there were six assistant chiefs. And then what year was it, do you know? I don't know what year it was. They went to three, we attritioned out three, basically.
Mm-hmm.
If I remember correctly. And then the fire marshal, we had two fire marshals, right, and one training officer. Those were the three assistant chiefs.
Mm-hmm.
I believe. One training officer and two fire marshals. So when it got changed, they, those guys went back on shift as captains or whatever until they retired, and that allowed the chief to appoint. By taking it out of there, taking those three out, then he was able to appoint whoever he wanted in as fire marshal, training officer, and PIO. And that was put in the merit ordinance in two thousand eleven, November eighth. The chap boy is the one that brought it to there, and it made them. Made them call the, uh, fire marshal, the training officer, and the PIO officer policymaking positions, and that spells out that you can't have.
We have to copy that. I was on council, man, so that's why I was the liaison, I find that interesting that she sponsored that.
I think that one was really good, it's on, I was the chief for a while. You're, you're gonna have it. I'm sure I got that all the time.
Okay, well, with that being said, we, this is going, we knew this was going to take time. Uh, I, I think though, um, on the agenda for next council meeting, we have the age. Um, I think, uh, these changes will take time, but we do need to figure out the lateral.
I was just going to say, it would be nice to.
If we can work through that as our next, um, priority, and then some of this easy language though, I think I can do that change easier. But, uh, we do need to come back to, uh, if you pull one fifty.
Thoughts.
To these, uh, percentages.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, let's try to, uh, get some background on the lateral and see what we need to do, and maybe some time with the, the police department, find out what their, what they did. Because that's going to have to go to the negotiation, later negotiations for that, um, for that change, so. It'll be away from us, really, so let's just figure out, get all the information and pass it on. Because, um, with the, with the police, they put the lateral transfer, uh, piece into their contract, it's not a part of the ordinance.
Right.
So.
I got a question.
No, I'm sorry.
What are your thoughts on lowering the age to eighteen years?
Well, I, I.
Hang on.
I have, I have a thought on it. I have a thought on it, um. So I have a thought. I have a thought on the eighteen to twenty one year olds, um, wanting to capture them before they do something else. I don't know about how the curve, you know, I don't understand the curve piece enough. But I knew that the age was lower, that they could start working for the fire department, but do, is there an issue with the curve? So is there?
There is. I talked to somebody this morning about that.
The gap.
There, there is. Eighteen, no, it's, it's probably twenty one, and it, it's in black and white, and it's just.
But I feel.
I don't want to say who it was, but I talked to somebody about it, and he said, no, they can't.
But that's what I, that's what I was.
It's Indiana code thirty six eight dash three five dash twelve.
Can I have that too?
What is that?
That.
That is, uh, here, twenty one to thirty six.
That's the curve.
That's the Indiana code.
But, but my question is, we increased it that they can stay out to forty, they can apply to forty.
Yeah, that's the new one for the, um.